Okay, let's call this meeting to order. I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great Constitution, for which we stand in honor, in God, with the love of the Lord, with the liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the Secretary, if we could have a roll call, please.
Mr. Getchere?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yeah.
Mr. Hogan?
Hello.
Mr. Lemay?
Here.
Mr. Nakko?
Mr. Sheen?
Yeah.
Mr. Bahu?
Here. Okay, Mr. Richardson, is there anybody signed up on a sheet that's sitting right next to you to speak?
No, there was none.
Okay, thank you. Now, school committee communications. I think the first thing I want to do is welcome our newest members. We have Mr. Richardson, who is representing Dunstable for the next four years. We thank you, we welcome you for being here, and we're looking forward to your input.
I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We also welcoming Mr. Hogan, representative of the town of Lowell, Massachusetts. Welcome, you've been here before. And I'm sure you're very seasoned, and you'll hit the ground running.
I'm here to work under your tutelage.
That's great to hear. I look forward to that. Thank you, Mr. Hogan. Mr. Nakko, Representative Tingsborough, is a little bit under the weather tonight, therefore he's not here, we'll welcome him next meeting. Any school committee communications? No, not yet. None, great. And now we're going to have the report of the student representative, that's you, Nellie.
Our first one up is Skills USA. Skills USA hosted their annual Community Outreach Challenge in conjunction with the eighth grade open house held earlier this month. In the challenge, student shop representatives were tasked with planning at least one interactive station that allowed our eighth grade visitors to feel what it's like to be in that shop. This year, the focus was on the workplace skills, essential element of planning, organizing, and management. There were 28 interactive stations during this year's event, which was judged by members of our Skills USA alumni and friends organization. The winning shops were carpentry first place, electrical second place, and culinary third place. Next, we have student activities. Student activities were on display in the main entrance, is that what that means? Main entrance?
The mall.
M U mall, okay. I didn't know, I was M U mall during our eighth grade open house. Trifold displays, electronic media, and interactive stations allowed the eighth graders and their families to see the multitude of activities available to our students. Dance club presented some K-pop routines and invited guests to join in in some popular dances. Art club featured a creative drawing area. N A B T Bio Club had microscopes with specimens to examine, and our Skills USA freshman program invited our eighth grade visitors to engage in a Skills USA Career Essentials Fund fair game. During the month of December, National Technical Honor Society and National Honor Society students volunteered at Restored, the Habitat for Humanity store, where they organize and sort donations to be sold for charity. Members are required to complete 10 hours of community service each term, and they are always looking for new ways to help others. They are currently exploring partnerships with the Wish Project and the Lowell Transitional Center for Future Service Events. The freshman and sophomore planning committees held a successful butter braid fundraiser during the month of December. The event raised $2,560 to defer the cost of upcoming activities and events. Educators Rising is creating a children's book that students will present at Educators Rising State Competition being held at UMass Lowell in March. The book is geared towards grades K through 3 and is a mystery story called Detective Checkers. The story encourages children to look beyond outside appearances when making judgments. Our club hosted a special extended workshop last week where students were able to learn to make their own handmade jewelry. Students learned the finer points of beading and left the workshop with their own finished pieces. Peer mentors are still looking for freshman mentees. Mentors will be going into freshman digital literacy classes this month to recruit new members. Mentors have been continuing their training and learning what it means to be a valuable mentor, as well as strategies of effective communication. Bio Club assembled 100 catapult packages for the science department to distribute at the eighth grade open house. They also planned their own interactive station, which was attended by more than 50 eighth graders, their siblings, and parents. During the month of January, Bio Club will be studying the science behind snowflakes as we wait for more snow. Dance Club is practicing their routine for Turn It Up, for the Turn It Up Dance Challenge being held in Lowell on March 17th to 19th, 2023. They've received a scholarship from the organization for their entry fee and are excited to present their talents, as well as their student-created choreography. Senior Class Planning Committee has been finalizing the list for prom themes for seniors to vote on this month. Prom will be held on Friday, May 5th, 2023, at the Boston Marriott in Burlington. They're also starting to brainstorm senior week activities and are planning a carnival-themed farewell on the last day for seniors, which will begin with our annual visit from the hypnotist Steve Wonker. Athletics. The swim and dive team have competed strong all season and look to be amongst the top finishers at the CAC League Meet on February 1st. The ice hockey team currently holds a 5-6 record and will finish strong and secure a postseason tournament bid. The Griffin Cheer Squad will be heading to the NCA Cheer National in Dallas, Texas, from January 20th through 22nd. They hope for a strong showing as they prepare for a local competition starting next month. The competition dance team will enter its second year with a strong group of returning performers. They will also start performing at home basketball games this season as they prepare for competitions next month. The girls and boys indoor track team currently sit near the top in the league this winter season. Both should be in the mix for the CAC Championship being held February 11th at the Reggie Lewis Center in Boston. Boys and girls basketball, both are off to strong starts as they head towards the midpoints of their respective seasons. The boys currently hold a 6-3 record while the girls check in at 7-2. Both will look to secure tournament bids for the state vocational and MIA tournaments next month. The Griffin wrestling team has been amongst the toughest in the area, finishing fifth at the Wayland Holiday Tournament, as well as advancing a number of wrestlers in the Lowell Holidays held over Christmas break. They will look to carry the momentum into the state vocational meet on January 28th, as well as the MIA Sectionals next month.
Thank you, Nellie.
Good luck tomorrow night.
Thank you.
One question, Superintendent.
Sure.
On the Dance Club, the Turn It Up Dance Challenge?
Mm-hmm.
It says it's being held in, where do we have a location? Or it hasn't been secured yet?
Held in Lowell? I don't, I can get back to you on that.
Yeah, no hurry. Outstanding, thank you, Nellie.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nellie.
Thank you.
Okay, now the approval of minutes, if I could have a motion to waive the reading?
Okay.
Motion by Mr. Getchere, seconded by Mr. Sheen. Roll call to waive the reading?
Mr. Getchere?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes. Okay, if I could have a motion to approve the allocated funds spent in January of 2023 in the sum of $5,338,532.14.
I'll waive the reading.
Motion by Mr. Moran, seconded by Mr. Sheen. Roll call.
Mr. Getchere?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes. Report of General Counsel?
I'm reassessing the committee.
Oh, okay, great. I overlooked one item, thank heavens for our secretary right here. The approval of our minutes of December 15, 2022.
So, sorry.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Getchere?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes. Okay, report of our General Counsel, there is none tonight?
Well, yeah.
That'll come at the end of the meeting.
An executive session.
An executive session, of course. And next, we're going to have the report of our Superintendent.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I'd also like to welcome our new school committee members and look forward to working with them to move Greater Lowell Technical High School forward and to ensure that all of our students receive a quality education, vocational technical education. So, welcome to Greater Lowell Technical High School. And the first item on my agenda, I'm happy to inform the school committee that Greater Lowell has been awarded, excuse me, an additional $186,000 from the Commonwealth Corporation to run a second round of adult training programs. This grant will fund the electrical and welding training for 24 participants this summer and a carpentry training program for 12 participants in the fall.
Motion.
I'm also happy to report that we have been awarded a career technical initiative grant in the amount of $144,000 to provide training for 24 participants in plumbing and culinary. And we will be partnering with local agencies such as Lenzies, New Era Plumbing, HVAC, Marku Plumbing and Heating, Stones Hospitality Group, the Yo Grill, Owen's in Ollie's, Primo Pizza and Restaurant, and Middlesex III Coalition. And I want to thank our community partners for supporting us with this grant. The next item on my agenda is the Cooperative Education Report, which is in your packet. So, I'd just like to say that although your packet indicates 174 senior students, currently we have 176 senior students on co-op, which is a total of 33% of our senior class is on co-op. And a copy is in your packet if anybody has any questions regarding our current co-op. Our co-op director is currently working on placing our junior students out on co-op. Next on my agenda, I'd like to ask for Assistant Superintendent Principal, Mr. Michael Barton, to join us to provide information regarding a request for out-of-state travel for one of our science instructors, which is also in your packet. Welcome, Mr. Barton, thank you.
Thank you, good evening, everyone. The item, the agenda item is to ask for approval for Aparna Sharma, who is a ninth-grade honors biology teacher, as well as an AP biology teacher, to attend the National Science Teachers' Association's National Science Education Program in Atlanta, Georgia, from March 22nd to March 25th, which is a Wednesday through a Saturday. A little background on Ms. Sharma. Ms. Sharma is the person who designed the Advanced Placement Biology Course. She is also the primary teacher of that course. And she also founded the Biology Club, which was mentioned in your introduction tonight. There are 10 members of the Biology Club in grades 9 through 12, so they've been doing some exciting work throughout the school community. Ms. Sharma is also a member of the Steering Committee on the Professional Learning Committee, which has done an incredible amount of work with over 40 teachers this summer and into this fall and spring. So, wholeheartedly, I support her participation in this professional development event, broken down into hotel, travel, airplane travel, hotel expenses per diem, as well as conference registration. We're looking for approval of $2,152.
Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Moran, seconded by Mr. Sheen. Roll call.
Mr. Getchere?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Barton. And that's the end of my report this evening.
Okay, thank you, Superintendent. We could have the report of our business manager, Mr. Knight.
I just wanted to bring your attention, you're signing this one, but there's three of these. All right? And this one. And this one. You didn't sign the first one, the others we got. Just want to get a demerit.
Okay, Mr. Knight, welcome.
Start my report. So, we're actually going to go a little bit out of order, I'm going to go to my third item on my agenda, which was the surplus, the declaration of our smart boards to be surplus. And the media department's moving with the replacement schedules that we put together for our smart boards, looking at a useful life of roughly seven years on those. We have 17 smart boards currently that were manufactured and installed in 2015, so they've reached what we declare as our end of life. So, we're looking to move those to surplus. For the benefit of our new members, when something does get moved to surplus, the disposal process goes as follows. We have to establish a value for the items. Anything that's valued over $5,000 has to follow Chapter 30B disposal process as established by the state. Anything that is valued below $5,000, we offer for free to our member municipalities, schools, et cetera. If they're not interested, the property then gets put up for sale either through a public auction site or other means, depending on value, or looks to make a donation to another school or charitable organization. And finally, if none of those methods of disposal gain any interest, then we'll actually move to standard, traditional trash disposal of those items. So, for the smart boards, we're looking for a motion to declare the 17 smart board surplus and then move them to that disposal process.
Motion by Mr. Hogan?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Lemay. Let me read the motion, just to make sure. To approve the establishment of, oh, my mistake. To declare 17 smart boards surplus. Roll call.
Mr. Getchere?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
All right, next we'll move back to my first item on the agenda, which was to declare the display cases that were removed from the recently renovated Culinary Cafe and have those declared surplus. These are probably six or so years old. After a quick internet search, it looks like they're each going to hold a value of over $5,000, so we will have to go through that 30B process again, which is a publicly advertised process for the sale of those items. So, the motion on this would be to declare the two federal CGR 504-2DZ display cases that have been removed from the Culinary Cafe as surplus.
Motion by Mr. Hogan, seconded by Mr. Getchere. Roll call.
Mr. Getchere?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
And on the last surplus item of the evening, Metal Fabrications Shop, as the floor was being redone last summer, evaluated the equipment that they had in place in the shop, what they used, what they might have duplicate items of, and found that there were two items that they either had duplicates of or no longer needed. The first was a Comico or a Comique roller from 1998. This one is not functioning, it seems to have an electrical issue whenever they tried to rewire it or plug it in, it keeps tripping a breaker, so probably unsafe to resell, and probably just look to move that one to scrap. And the second piece would be, have a Ten Smith F696 12 and 96-inch heavy-duty steel brake. They have two of these in the shop. It's not a very commonly-used piece of equipment in industry, from what they've told me, so they think that just having one would be plenty to teach the kids on in how to use it, because they probably won't be doing a ton of work with it. So, that one probably does carry a value that is going to require that I go, again, to a kind of a reverse auction or an auction on that to put that out. I believe, knew they carry a value of somewhere around $15,000. This one's a little bit older, I believe it was at least six or seven years old. It's just not something they have a great use for at the moment.
Okay, there are motions to declare both pieces of equipment surplus. Motion by Mr. Sheen, seconded by Mr. Lemay. Roll call.
Mr. Getchere?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
All right, and the next item on my agenda is to seek the approval to start the process of establishing a capital stabilization fund for Greater Lowell Technical High School. The capital stabilization fund is allowable by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 71, 16 and 1/2, but will need to be voted at this board and then as well at city council and each town meeting of our surrounding member communities. The funds in the capital stabilization can accumulate up to 5% of your assessed value to your member communities, which is roughly 16 million for us right now, so 5% of 16 million. And what this fund will help us do is to create long-range savings for larger capital items that we might have in the future. It's also a, going to be, we're going to be able to use it as a way to move money out of restricted funds, such as our adult education funds and LPN program funds, and move them into this capital stabilization fund so that they can then be used. When they're held in the individual program funds, they're very restricted in the use of those funds, but because those programs don't get charged for building use space and those types of things, by creating the capital stabilization fund and moving the money annually from those restricted funds to our general fund and then over to capital stabilization, we're able to sort of, I guess, make them more accessible for our communities, or for our school, which eventually will reduce the assessment that we need to make to our communities. As you know, we don't have much of a method or a mechanism to save in the district, just our excess and deficiency, which we currently have, but this allows us to add a second layer to that, so that as the building ages and things come up for projects, we'll be able to either tackle them on our own or at least offset the costs to the member communities.
Okay, we have a question by Mr. Hogan.
Mr. Knight, could you just educate me a bit on the source of the funds?
Yep, so we run programs that are, I would say, outside of our core. So, in the evenings, we, every student that graduate, well, student or anyone that wants to be in the electrical field, plumbing field, they have to maintain certifications and increase their education to do so. So, we run those programs at night through our adult education, and then we also offer a post-secondary program, so a college-level nursing program that runs days and nights. So, these programs are outside of our core as a K-12 school, not 9-12 school, not K-12, but outside of our core, so they're, in some districts, they are run by third-party organizations. We run all of ours internally, but depending on where you go, the method of how those programs are run is different.
So, what effect monetarily speaking would this have on the student attending those classes?
So, we won't have to change any tuition rates or anything like that for the people that are in those programs. We tend to charge the lower end for those programs, based on what I've checked myself. And this isn't going to affect what they have to pay, but it just becomes a financial mechanism to help the school utilize those funds for capital projects.
Which is a good thing.
Yep.
So, there's no impact?
No.
On the non-core student in the evening?
No, they're all going to have the same tuition rate, they're not going to see a change in any manner at all, it's more backend mechanics for me. So, this vote, is this all or nothing, or a majority of the representing districts? I believe it's a 2/3 of our communities, so for us, it'll be 3 out of 4, whichever 3 get to it first.
Mr. Lemay?
Mike, are these like, are they dedicated funds for certain aspects, or can they be utilized for like anything we renovate?
It just becomes, it becomes, so they have to be for anything that could be considered a capital project that you would borrow for. So, anything that we could potentially finance, so generally, projects of, I mean, we're restricted on capital spending to a cap of $150,000 right now by the state statute, I think it's CMR 60310. So, really, anything above that, our only mechanism to do it, whether we had the funding or not, is to go out and do a capital project, which would be, which we would borrow for.
Based on the size of the school and the amount that you said, it's a considerable chunk of change.
Yeah, we could, I mean, over time, I think it would take many years, because the amounts that we're going to charge to these programs aren't big dollar figures. We have to do it based on what we would normally charge someone in industry, so for use of a classroom, it's like 10 bucks an hour. So, if the electrical program runs 75-hour program, fall and a 75-hour spring, I mean, we're talking about 1,500 bucks on that one program per year. We could accumulate up to 800,000, and that would kind of be the goal, is that you want to accumulate that fund up as much as possible, so that, you know, I know we did the big reno in 2014, 2016, I hate to say it, but, you know, that means stuff's going to be 10 years old that we put in three years from now, and the likelihood of something coming up and you need a $500,000 rooftop unit, you know, we won't have, we might have that in E and D, we might not, but then being able to say, you know, we've got 100,000 over here in capital stabilization, we take 300 out of E and D, that means we're only charging the members, you know, that last 100 that we couldn't come up with. Without that mechanism, we're kind of hands-tied, and that money can accumulate into the funds for the LPN and the night school or adult ed programs as they have over years, it just becomes inaccessible to us.
Thank you, very enlightening.
Any other questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Do we need a vote to reverse this if we choose to in the future, the same three-quarter?
I would say, once it's established, it would be established. In order to reverse it, it would seem like we would have to not be making any money off of our night programs.
We could also choose as a board not to put any money into it, correct?
Yep.
When you come to reform us, sort of like, right, it comes to us, so if we don't want to put any money in, we just don't have to.
Yeah, and then the use of funds has to come through the board as well. So, Jill and I couldn't make a decision on a Thursday afternoon that we're, we're doing something with this money, it all has to come back here.
So, it's just established.
Right.
My concern is the cost to the student, that's all.
There's no cost to any student. We haven't raised prices on our night programs, Mr. Hogan, in the time that I've been here.
And I did a quick look, just for peace of mind on that, I did a quick look around. I think we're cheaper than Greater Lawrence, we're cheaper than Shaw Sheen, for sure. I just looked at the local, you know, vocational schools, just to see what they were charging, and I think we're the cheapest out of, out of at least the drivable area. If not the cheapest, we're pretty close.
Well, that's because we're in a city school district, and we sort of keep an eye out for our population.
For sure.
Okay, so, motion by Mr. Sheen to approve the establishment of capitalization account for the Greater Lowell Regional Vocational Technical School District, and seconded by Mr. Getchere. Any other questions? Roll call.
Mr. Getchere?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes. That concludes my report tonight, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, any items brought up under old business that people would like to discuss right now? This is the time to go ahead and do it. Okay, we'll move on to new business. Any thoughts?
I just got one thing of the Culinary Cafe, because when I came in and got my packet, I usually go grab a coffee, they were in the middle of doing it over, and it was basically a maintenance department, along with Jill and Mike, you know, leading it, and it came out beautiful, it was real quick done, and it came out nice, so it was, just give a kudos to the maintenance department, everybody that was involved.
It's a great program, and it needed a nice renovation.
It is.
And it's amazing that they sort of did it during the Christmas break.
No, it was done three days ago.
Three days ago, yeah. How great is that?
Yeah, I'll tell you what, it was.
It was done in really, yeah, three days.
Yeah, it was quick. It was our maintenance department, it was, it was quick.
Good, so nobody even missed a coffee?
No, no, it was closed, it was closed. It was closed, we can't work miracles.
Outstanding. Thank you for that, Mr. Getchere. Okay, new business, there is new business. Committee, committee person motions, there are none. Report of subcommittees, there were no subcommittee meetings last month, therefore, there is no report. And we're gonna need two votes to go into executive session. Vote number one would be for executive session pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A 2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparations for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, teaching assistant. Could have a motion to go into executive session for that. Motion by Mr. Lemay, seconded by Mr. Morin. Roll call, please.
Mr. Getcheer?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes, and I need a second motion for executive session pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A 3, to discuss strategy with respect of collective bargaining or litigation if an open-meeting law may have detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, and the chair so declares. Greater Lowell Technical High School Committee versus Greater Lowell Regional Teachers Association, 218-1, CVO 4292, and American Arbitration Association Case Number 01200001722. Motion by Mr. Sheehan, seconded by Mr. Getcheer. Roll call.
Mr. Getcheer?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes. Okay, let's take a five-minute break.
One second, can we, are we taking, coming out of here? Can we adjourn and then come out?
It seems like we may have to take a vote.
Okay. So. I just wanna ask how long we can.
Sure. So, five-minute break, and then we'll go into executive session.
I think I remember.
Okay, we just come out of executive session and pursuant to Mass. General Law 38, we have decided to revise a lead teaching position for our RISE program.
Teaching assistant.
Teaching assistant position for our RISE program, and would like to take a vote to create that new title.
I'll make a motion.
And advertise for a new teacher.
Assistant.
Teaching assistant. Motion by Mr. Getcheer for the new teaching assistant for our RISE program, seconded by Mr. Lemay. Roll call.
Mr. Getcheer?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes. Okay, that essentially.
Motion rejected.
Ends our meeting, and we have a motion by Mr. Sheehan to adjourn, seconded by Mr. Hogan. Roll call to adjourn.
Mr. Getcheer?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Present.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes. Okay. It's a wrap. Thank you, everyone, for watching.